Mr. Mayor, would you please call the room?
Anne Miller, present. Lieutenant first.
Present.
Lieutenant second.
Present.
Josh Barron.
Present.
Ben Manning.
Present.
Susie Lips.
Present.
James Wisco.
Present.
Mayor, we have a floor.
At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Jeff Floyd to come forward and introduce the curtain line, so if you would all stand, and remain standing for a quick break.
Our precious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. Signs of spring are everywhere. We're all anxious to get out, so I enjoy this beautiful city of Martinsville. We thank you for what you've done here the last 200 years. We celebrate just the greatness and the goodness of this city. We ask that you will give Mayor Costin and the City Council wisdom and insight on how to make Martinsville better and a great place to raise a family and fulfill the future you have for us. As we're here tonight in this nice setting, our hearts go out to the people of Ukraine
Yes.
and what is happening around the world. It seems conflict is everywhere. And so, as our God, we call upon you to come and just inhabit this room and the decisions that are to be made affecting so many people, those who have and those who have not. Thank you for the opportunity we have to pray publicly like this, to call upon you to guide us. We love you, in the name of Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Prior to tonight's meeting, you were given your packets, the minutes from our meeting for the 14th. Are there any comments or corrections regards to minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the February 14th, 2020 minutes.
Been a motion made to approve minutes, is there a second?
A second, Dan.
The motion is a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those noted, motion carries. Earlier today, we had a little bit of celebration here in the council chambers. The Lieutenant Governor Suzanne Crouch was down and announcing a grant that the City of Martinsville, along with Stability First, received. And I just happen to have a champion. For $600,000. There was one other community in the state that received the grant, but Butler, Indiana. This is for Stability First to work on their men's shelter on East Morgan Street. The Lieutenant Governor was very pleased and impressed with what Martinsville is doing to help with the eviction problems that we all, you know, every city faces, and let's be honest, every family faces in some nature, in some way. So, you know, very fortunate to have her come down today and present this to us. You know, we've got some people we need to thank that helped make this grant work. Eric Frye, Victoria Becker, and Carrie Riley, they're the ones with the Administrative Resources Association, helped us get the information together and make the application. Thanks to Reverend Rick Miller and Judy Brucie for their invaluable information and background they gave us for the grant. Jamie Taylor, the Chamber of Commerce, she called us about the same time this reporter came in and told me that this was going to be a grant that we could try for, and she called and suggested we get hold of Stability First, so it kind of worked hand in hand, one another there. So, it was a great day, a great plus plug for our city. So, we again thank the Lieutenant Governor and the Oakra for this grant and this opportunity that we have. Another thing that you've got in your packet tonight, we have been informed that Duke Energy will be doing mediation on their property at Mulberry and Highland. It'll be happening here in a couple of weeks, it'll take a couple of weeks to get it accomplished. So, you've got the information in your packets, and now I can say that you know everything about it that I don't. So, if you have any questions, there are phone numbers in there to call them. Vice Sentinel, Mr. Porter and I worked with Mr. Hels on the funds that we had given him last year, and with no additional funds, he has planned a celebration that we will have on the 17th of September. It's not quite to a level that we would have liked it then, but we understand that, you know, funds are tight, and we're going to do the best that we can to celebrate our Vice Sentinel for our city. So, now, we need to have a public hearing regards to vacating an alley and a street. So, without objection, the council will recess for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the petition. And so, at this time, we call a word of the public hearing on the petition, vacate public ways. At this time, I'd like the County Administrator Josh Messmer and Commissioner Brian Collier to explain their petition.
Good evening, folks. It's good to be back here, it's been a few years since I've had the pleasure of working with many of you and a lot of new faces since my time at the Realtors. And Mayor, thank you for working with Stability First, a big need in the community and it's a big one for us. I'm going to give you the nuts and the bolts of what we're doing, and then Commissioner Collier will probably follow up with some more high-level remarks. But you have before you two drawings. One of them has ink on it, and it shows the areas in question. I know there was some confusion early on about what we were actually requesting, and we wanted to make clear with this drawing that the areas that we are asking to vacate are only our property, it doesn't impact or come onto the property that we share with anybody else. And it would start at the property line that is adjacent to our building, and then it would run across the alley all the way to Mulberry Street, and a section of the alley on the other side. And we're asking to vacate Mulberry from Jackson Street to Flumby Street. And the reason being is we're working towards some new parking facilities, and we want to make sure that as that becomes a pedestrian corridor, that's something that's protected for pedestrians. We have proposed to the city that we would put light ballers there so that that street could be opened if needed, open to emergency vehicles, or if there was ever some temporary condition where you also, we really would like access to this, that's something we'd be more than happy to work with the city to. The other drawing that you have before you is a picture of the security vegetable. We're in the process of moving forward with Mondeon right now to do a number of facilities, to build some space out of the fairgrounds for some offices that we need to house elsewhere, as well as parking facilities, and the security vegetable that you see right now, which actually crosses the alley west of our building. So, that's some of the reasons we're here before you tonight, is we have parking needs on one side, we have pedestrian usage on one side, we have a security vegetable that's going to be crossing the alley should you guys grant a request. So, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Collier. My name is, you finish all your remarks.
Thank you. One of my favorite Little Rastor episodes is when Spanky's up in a Roman uniform, and he's in front of a group of peers, and he says, "Friends Romans country, lend me your years." And so, tonight, I find myself, friends, neighbors, Americans, lend me your years. Martinsville and Morgan County is changing. I'm not for sure exactly how many housing permits you guys have been faced with in the last couple of months, but I would think that we're about to build more houses here in the next 18 to 24 months than we probably have in the last decade. So, things are starting to change, and some of that growth is coming back on the county that we have to expand some of our facilities. And some of these facilities, we've had, well, like the courthouse for 150 years. And so, there are projects that have been placed upon our laps that we have to act upon now, whether we want to or not, because our hands are going to be forced. We need the growth, we need the expansion, and at the same time, we are confined at the county level, as you are at the city level, with limited funds and unlimited wants and needs. This is the first step in the project to move into a direction, and eventually, we'd like to have what's known, basically, I think Judge Foley said it best, a court campus. So, this is the first step. We have to secure the building, we have a lot of issues where people that aren't so friendly are making entrance, and we need to have a more secure way of protecting our employees and the citizens within. So, this is the first step of many that you will start seeing from the county as we expand our facilities right here in the great city of Martinsville. If you have any questions, Josh and I'd be happy to answer any of them.
I see on the drawings, Brian, in your green space, can you walk us through exactly how far you're looking to expand the buildings, and what offices are you looking to put on there, and what the overall plan is? I know we've got some property over here that we'll probably discuss in here shortly. Have you got plans of using that green space, expanding that way? Are you going to put more of the court services in there?
Eventually, yes. But this is a multi-phase project. Anyone, without stepping on toes of our forefathers in 96, which was when they put the admin building on, and literally, my daughter came home, and I told her I was in the Commissioner's office, and she asked, "Is that the building that's backwards?" So, the generations behind us don't know that that's the admin building, they just know it's the government building that's backwards. So, part of the green space that you see in here, eventually, what we're trying to do is to be good neighbors and tie our facilities a little bit better in with the downtown area. As the phases go, and to answer some of the questions that I'm sure we're coming up on, parking garage and parking needs, we're trying to keep those that will be using the court services and the county services in the parking lots and not on your streets, and not parked in front of residential homes, so that they can use their own space in front of their home. The security that you're seeing in front of us is phase one. Eventually, we plan on upgrading to possibly building a court campus, a whole building there in the back of the security, updating the admin, possibly moving probation to that facility, getting them out of the Tunder Building. We have some discussions there with somebody that might be willing to purchase that, and they're out of space. Probation is out of space. Their bathrooms are inadequate for employees, the ADA compliance is grossly being abused. So, we have come, we are facing several issues that makes it virtually cost prohibitive for the government to carry on the functions that are demanded of us in the facilities that we're in. So, yeah, there's all kinds of things going, but this will be done and completed probably long after I'm out of office.
So, to the court camps, I'm assuming that you're going to be wanting to move prosecutor's office as well, from the old court's office over there as well?
That is in discussions, yes. We are looking at long-term use for that building. I'm sure we'll probably come back and discuss once we get a little bit more direction with the prosecutor, with the value of the building, with what's remaining on our lease, if the city would have any need. But that's in the early stages. We've just, we've just started cracking that. Eventually, we'd like to house things such as probation, prosecution, the judges, everything where they can go through this security vegetable, so that everything is secure, so that the bad guys that we know are bad because they've been arrested, they've been prosecuted, they're on probation, and they can walk right through the front door and do whatever they want. And then, we're reactive versus being proactive. This is a proactive plan. With our limited budget, we can do this, but it'll be several years, but it's a step in the right direction. It's a step that we, as a county, probably should have taken a decade ago. We are the last, as you know, of the doughnut counties to see expansion. The southern end of Morgan County is the last to have the type of building pressure that I believe that we're just starting to see. I think with what's going on in the world, what the Federal Reserve's saying with interest rates, I still think we are less expensive than developing to the north side of Indianapolis, to the west side of Indianapolis, to the east side of Indianapolis. So, while you've seen huge booms in real estate, real estate prices, can they step back? Any normal market would do that, stock market, house market, ups and downs, ups and downs. But I think we're insulated here because of being the last one to develop, and still being relatively inexpensive per acre versus these other counties. And we just, we're a bit summer, two summers away from being able to get in your car and be in downtown Indianapolis in 18 minutes, and I can be in Bloomington, if I know where all my police friends are, in about 15 minutes. So, we, I think this area is primed to explode with growth. And I've been saying, I ran for office for the first time in 1998. My wife and I made a conscientious decision to stay here when we were pregnant with our first child, Brianna. And I said, "If I'm going to stay here, I'm going to get involved here." Adversity does not scare me, differences of opinion does not scare me. I've tried to teach my kids, if everyone thought like Brian Collier, they'd all want to live in Martinsville, the earth would go lopsided, fall off its axes and spin into the sun. So, differences of opinion are great, differences of opinion are needed. But I also said, eventually, the growth here is going to be like a lump of clay, and it will be up to all of us to take that clay and put it on a spinning wheel, add a little water, and turn it into a beautiful boss, or we can just let it die and have to deal with it. And so, for 20-some years, I've tried to spin that. Anybody who was a teacher of mine who knew me in art classes, I'm doing the best I can.
And I know it's going to take several years, expansions. How about that part of the parking lot? Are you eventually wanting to go with a parking garage, or is it going to remain a parking lot?
If you look at what's rendered in front of you, we have proposed and have the funds and the permission to build a parking garage. We have spoke to the seven homes that will have a parking garage directly in their backyard, and we have proposed for the seven homes, if they can all get into an agreement after appraisals, and if we can buy those, we would prefer to have a parking lot, not a parking garage, but we are going to have the need for those spaces, and if we can't go out, we will be forced to go up. So, we are prepared to go up, to go on with this plan, but our preference would be to go out. It'd be a huge cost savings that we could implement and use elsewhere as we continue in these phases to complete all the tasks at hand. Good question.
My question is, are you, this red area, do you plan on shutting down that part of Mulberry, between Jackson and Flumby?
Yes, I would.
Isn't that a big thoroughfare for police and fire?
No.
Not? Really?
I do not, I don't want to question with my chief and put on my other hat, but I try not to drive the fire trucks down any of the side streets, Main Street, Morgan Street, Ohio Street, Washington Street. You go just past Mulberry, pass this, and you run into too many cars on both sides of the street, and it makes it very difficult to get an aerial or a large apparatus through there.
What about the police? Is that kind of a main thoroughfare for you guys?
No, not really. We're using primarily the same streets that they are, your Main, Ohio, Home, and a lot of those, Washington, Morgan, so that would not have a significant impact on the police officers.
So, tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM, when you see Chief Green having me out driving the area around to prove that I can drive it, thanks to him.
I was going to say, I can't remember the last time we took a fire truck down that street, because it's just not the typical route that we would take.
Actually, the last time I was on duty in 180 South Main Street, the panel went off for fire alarm. We went down Main and then turned to go into the parking lot. We actually didn't come down Mulberry. We, I avoid Mulberry. All the side streets I avoid.
Any other questions from the council for Mr. Messmer?
One more question.
Sure.
Were the county employees surveyed to see if they would? You, in fact, walked as far as that parking lot to, because you're still going to keep the other parking in front, correct? Of the annex?
She's talking about your existing parking.
Your existing parking.
Not long term.
Huh?
Not long term.
Not long term?
No. No, that, basically, we're in phase two. After the security's done, we're going into phase two.
Hot topic here, right here, this property, the north of the existing annex, probably the, I know they're here in the annex as well. You're wanting to vacate the alley north of the property. Their concern is about getting out, their employees, and they have a small parking faction. So, come their seasonal times, they have more employees come and they utilize that. What can be done? How close are you going to be? I'm just looking at, I would think, well, we've got the alley here that's been vacated years ago. Can that be utilized for them to get exit their property, rather than, I think there was a proposal of going through their, maybe their parking, or their parking lot, taking out a panel fence or whatever? Is there any possibility of being able to give them more space at this time to be able to exit for the employees to get out and?
Make a U, like a continuous horseshoe?
Yeah, or so forth, or yeah, or?
Originally, there was a misconception that we were closing the whole alley, and that is not true.
Correct.
They will have access to their whole property.
Does that include?
So, they'll park here to the back of it and turn around and go back out? Yes, they can do that.
So, their parking spaces that they have back behind?
That's their parking spaces.
And that won't be closed off? Will they be able to continue on out, let's say, to Jackson Street? Or is it?
I'm not, I would have to talk to them. I'm not going to cross their property without permission.
So, Commissioner, the business owners can still access their building?
Yes, and their parking lot, in the back.
I think another question pertaining to that same area, Brian, to the north side of their rear entrance. In your future plans, will county properties be extended to that property line, which would prevent them from using that alley? In other words, eventually, will it be blocked off coming out on Jackson?
It, yes, our property will be blocked off. Our parking lot will be.
So, you will cross?
But if they, if, the original question, if I understand it, please correct me if I don't, was basically, can we do a cut through through the back parking lot and make a road on out to Jackson Street? A horseshoe.
Using the pre-existing alley?
So, not so much a horseshoe, L-shoe. Give it an L, more of an L.
L-shoe.
There'd be.
I don't have objection to that. I don't have objection to that. If you look at the rendering without the pink alley, I mean, what was discussed amongst the judges and the commissioners and the council, and is trying to make that aesthetically look good to tie in that area to the downtown. Originally, with an option based upon whatever the owners of the flower shop wanted to do, that's up to them. They've expressed that. My business is just two blocks down, and the dreaded words of intimate domains. I'm not for that. It's always a possibility of government to do that, but I'm not for that. I hope to work with them. You know, that's in the past where I've gotten my wife her flowers, my kids their flowers, so I want to work with them. I mean, I hope you trust me enough to know that. I've tried to be upfront and honest. So, could we do that? I'm willing to work, I mean, that's their call.
Brian, what if, you know, if someone had made a comment that you go in the parking lot, turn out, come back? Well, now, you're finally making that part of the alley two-way. What if you had Mr. Rats redesign that, it says decorated pavement? What if you had the alley come on to the west and curve around the property line and hit that concrete sidewalk and come down on Jackson Street?
In the non-color drawing, the red, the other one, it makes it, it looks like the security, what's concerning is it looks like the security, that pavement, he's talking about decorated pavement, it looks like that whole corner is shut off, so they basically come back in here and then they're stopped.
But if you redesigned that, you could take the alley one way to the west and then take it north one way.
But only if it was a given or guaranteed that their future building would not encroach upon that alley right away, going out to the north side.
Well, that, I mean, where you see in the rendering that's not colored, it says concrete sidewalk, and I'm never.
Yes, concrete sidewalk, that looks like that whole section is.
That's where phase two, it will sit up in there and work its way back towards the security vegetable. So, I would have to get back, one, I'm one of three, and two, I'd have to yield to my friend and architect on the capabilities of moving the security building back.
And I've heard on the vacate part of Mulberry Street, couldn't you just move it to the west?
Take security further west. So, moving the decorative pavement, that stuff more towards the parking, to allow that alley to be open for the turn.
So, you're asking if we would extend the alley back on our side of the alley that's been closed and is no longer there?
Yes. So, it has access to the previous north-south alley, north of your facility, like next alley.
Because if you go back to the road closing drawing, the entrance and exit is to the east of where we're proposing, so I would have to go, I don't think he's prepared for this, but we weren't prepared when we went against Bloomington South either. We did the best we could then, too. If I understand. We want, what would we have to do here to know this back?
Eric Rats, P O Z Architect. I think that one of the things that is really. Um, I think that one of the things that is really important about this whole process is trying to understand this work in progress that we're trying to develop. You know, we are scheduled, um, the May-June timeframe of giving a full picture of what all this may be. And I think at that point in time, one of the, the emphasis is about what we're looking at, as Commissioner Collier talked about, was trying to relate to the downtown area. And I think that whenever we start to look at a future building that potentially could be on the west half of this, of, you know, between Main Street and Mulberry, Columbus and Jackson, we look at a building that's on the west half of that site, at least part of it, is that what we're trying to do is to tie more into Main Street than into Mulberry Street. So that whenever we look at, when we're standing at the corner of Jackson and Main Street, we're looking at the government complex. And we're trying to look at it such that it addresses the whole downtown area. I mean, obviously, they all feel, I mean, we're all the same age, we know what, we've lived here all of our lives, and we know what we're trying to accomplish here. And when you look at the property north of the Flowers by Dewey where it says the linear plaza, is we're trying to create a, a court justice campus feeling that is connected to the downtown area, and it's something that from the, the old emphasis of the design, that that's something we're trying to accomplish. Can we turn and go north in the alley space for vehicular traffic? We can do what we have to do. There's, there's no doubt of that. But I think that, you know, we just have to also look at the security aspect of cars driving that close to a new court justice campus as well. So we'll look at it, if we can, and we'll look at schemes for that, but we also understand the, the Flowers by Dewey and their circulation pattern that they need for their vehicular traffic.
My concern with that is, uh, coming out of that alley and exiting on Jackson Street, with the county owning properties on both sides, north and south, uh, is there not a possibility that the county would want to develop that area? Perhaps a building or something that would further blockade that alley access? If ever the case, because eventually the flower shop would no longer have exit access.
I think they're planning on going there and somebody close that alley, and I think that's what their concern is, of putting that vehicular traffic there, it's gonna be close to that to go. So they do have a plan to put it, the building up there, right?
With the alley always remain open? I'm sorry, with the alley always remain open?
The existing one now between the admin and Flowers by Dewey, yes, at this point, as long as it's a flower shop.
In the east-west direction. I think, yeah, he's talking about the north-south. If we did this, would that remain open or give them that traffic to be able to go out and exit to the north? That's where you're talking about being close to your building. Is there a way to...
According to the drawing presented, it's closed. It's not even on the drawing.
Now you're talking about the turning regions, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm talking about coming out of that alley onto Jackson. Will that also be blocked later on at some point?
According to the drawing, it's closed.
Yeah, the north-south alley, and that's, that's where they are wanting access to come out here, Flower by Dewey through here. But they're going to put a building here along, along that alley, and that's what they're worried about.
But I'm worried, I'm worried about Flowers by Dewey coming on down there extending to get out on Jackson. Will that ever be blocked off?
So you're talking about your current exit now, where the alley was?
Right, so if we were to turn, and so, um, you know, Mr. Decker and I talked today about that, it's not, I think it's a great idea. I think in the short term, we are absolutely willing to accommodate that as best we can. In the long term, and Brian said, this is a work in progress. The day will come where that access will be shut off, and that, a year, it might be, four months, but that is the direction that we'll be heading. So, and we don't want to stand here and say, yeah, we're gonna leave it when we know at some point if we're not.
Any other comments from the council?
I'd like to know if I've addressed, or we have an address of concern to Andrea from the shop, to see if there's something that we're not asking over.
No, once a year or three asking questions, we'll open up for the public comment. Any other questions for Mr. Messmer, Commissioner Collier?
If you guys don't mind, um, as we, right, that exit stage left, uh, the counties were excited, um, there's, like Brian said, there's a lot of things that probably could have happened sooner, they didn't, and were, after lost time. We know that that comes with hardship. We're not aware of that, we don't want to be uncensored of that. But we have a lot of plans we want to do forward.
Two, two closing notes, uh, just to reiterate, we're, we're getting ready to make large investments back right here in ourselves. So we will need the help of, of the city, and we'll need the help of the citizens, and, um, just a point of clarification, because I always like to leave, even though it's a very serious subject, on a lighter note, that when Mr. Ratz and I were standing here, he was left half all, I was tied in. So when we did go against Bloomington South, you could see that our coaches weren't working with a whole lot. Thank you.
Share that.
At this time, I want to open the floor up for your public comment. All that we ask is, do you come to the podium, state your name and address, and speak in the podium, and we're only giving two minutes. So is there anyone who can help, who wants to come forward and speak?
Andrea Ashbrook, is that my home address or my business address?
Oh, my address.
One forty, no, sorry, thirteen sixty-seven Penn Up Court. So Kenny Hall was in the store a couple of weeks ago, and said that if we were going to want, when they blocked off the alley, if we were going to want access, we were going to have to take our, our parking lot to get out. He said they would, let an exit through what they say is going to be closed. But my feel is, why can't they open up that alley that's been vacated for, whenever they built that building? And give us access out that way? Instead of taking our parking, or not vacate the alley at all, and move the security towards Jackson Street, all the way over that way? That's my thoughts. And leave us alone completely.
Thank you, Andrea. Sure.
Duetta Crane, eleven nineteen, where we grow the white, um, the other co-owner of Flowers by Dewey. I have, just have a couple of things I wanna, with, if the parking lot is closed off, um, and what they're saying they would use it to, to access out onto Jackson, well, that's gonna take out several of our parking spaces where we actually park, and I'm worried about, um, when our semis are, they're gonna pull in the alley and try to unload, where are they gonna go? The semi's not gonna be able to make that bend because they're gonna wipe out half of our parking spots anyway if we're parked back there. We have a dumpster that sits back there, the trash man, I don't think they're gonna be very happy with that situation. They have to pull in there, try to turn around and back up and pick up our garbage, uh, container. You know, if they're, you know, if they're gonna be taking some of our, our actual employee parking spaces if they kind of do what they're saying, you know? Because we like parked, uh, by the concrete wall, so if that's gonna be part of the, you know, making that the access out, that's gonna take probably four or five of our parking spaces that we would need. It's, you know, just a few things that I think, you know, and I, if they close the alley off, is the maintenance department the ex door to us, are they moving? Because they have a double door there, and they get a lot more deliveries than we do with semis and stuff, so how are they gonna arrange for that? They're gonna be expected to turn around in our parking lot and come back around? I don't think they're gonna be happy with that either. Because they get a lot of deliveries, you know, from different things, so that's just a few things, you know? I don't know if we've got answers for those that are not today, but, you know, that's just a few things that I think, you know, need to be kind of figured out.
Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome.
Nine Beach, one fifty-nine West Jackson Street. Uh, our home is one of the, the cities proposing to buy. Um, we are in favor of it, um, kinda. Our first thought was, no, we're not buying, we're not selling because we don't want to sell it. But then after we thought about it, we are the first house on the alley, the red brick, next to the open lot. And my husband said, I don't want to look at the concrete wall for the rest of our lives. And I said, I understand. So what we want to know, is there a timeline on the purchase of the properties? Um, because if so, we've already got a place allocated where we're going, that we have to secure that place. And if so, you know, what, what's this timeline on the purchase of the properties? And so that we can make a few steps forward to figure it out.
When you say the city, which you're referring to the county?
I'm sorry, yes, the county. Is there a timeline?
Not interested.
What, what we'll do is, well, I'm jotting down, Duette had a question regards to the deliveries, yours on the timeline. I'll try to jot things down, and we'll ask Commissioner Collier and Mr. Messmer to come back up and try to address those.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Yes, please.
Cecilia Craft, I live at eleven hundred Jackson Street. I don't like government overage. Government's supposed to be of the people, by the people, and for the people. Citizens are the owners and employees of the flower shop. Their business is to sell flowers. Mr. Ratz's business is to sell designs. I'm picturing sidewalks covered with snow and ice, and how are they gonna maneuver that? Their business seasons, I'm sure, are Thanksgiving, Christmas, and Valentine's Day, times when we could have a lot of snow and a lot of ice. So my concern is primarily for the business owners, not for some highfalutin government complex.
Thank you, Cecilia.
Thank you.
And?
I want to know how this...
Oh, my name's Betty Chan, I live one sixty West Jackson. So this cement thing that I know is talking about, I'm gonna be staring at too. Now, I want to know, is that gonna take the property value up or is that gonna take the property value down? That's my question. Okay? And I don't want to look at that cement, but, thank you, thank you.
My name's Woody Carter, and I live at one eighty West Jackson. My thing is, is the kids. Our neighborhood is full of kids. And with all these cars coming flying up and down Jackson Street, which I'm sure they already do, but it's gonna be more traffic to our families. The security of the building, they may say, we had a, somebody run from court one day in our neighbor's house. They ended up in our neighbor's house. Who's to say that if they move all the courts and stuff over here, who's gonna say that it's not gonna happen to us? Or if something happens with our kids out here? Or also drugs. There's drugs to these alleys all through here, of course. Everybody knows, I'm sure Betty, all of us have seen it. What's gonna happen at nighttime when this garage is, there's no one in there? That's, my concern is the kids and all the traffic. And with the kids out playing, you're gonna have ten times the amount of traffic on Jackson Street. And, I mean, who's to say that our kids aren't gonna get hit? My kids play in that field, of course. We play ball in that field, um, it just, now, uh, we, we do ride bikes in, in the parking lots. I would rather see a parking lot than I would a big old huge building. Because that'll give the chance, I mean, after hours, the kids can ride in the parking lot, but if there's a big building, it's, it's gonna be a big security thing for us. We're just concerned about our safeties through that neighborhood. And of course, like Betty said, the property values. What's gonna happen to our property value if they build this huge garage? And of course, nobody wants to look at this big garage. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Teresa Reiner. I live at ten thirty-fourth Lane. Um, just a small, uh, thing about Dewey's there, um, I'm a little nervous. But, um, the thing is, they've been kind of bothered for a while now about taking their, you know, their property, and then it was now the alley, um, and then it's been mentioned, but in green space, where some of their property was at one time. And I think it's, it all comes down to the aesthetics, that their house, this beautiful old home, doesn't fit in with the plans. And I think they're taking a bully outlook on closing down the alley now, so that they can't even get in and out of their alleyway and their, their semis and stuff. And I think we all need to realize, even a small business has the right to stay where they're at.
Anyone else?
I'm Dyer Jameson. I live just outside City Limits, but I do use the courthouse a lot, we use the annex a lot. Is this a done deal? Is what I want to know. Have you stopped? If we have a parking garage, is it gonna be a pay garage? Who's gonna be in charge of security in there? I've been in a lot of parking garages in Indianapolis, and when we put in there, not safe for a seventy-five-year-old woman. I cannot park in the third level and come down the stairs to go and pay my taxes. How far are people gonna have to walk? I think there's a safety issue, there's an insurance issue, there's a lot of issues that I don't think people have thought about. How far people are gonna have to walk? Martinsville's a pretty old community, you've got a lot of older people. If you're gonna be moving it from the courthouse and moving it all over here, then there's gonna be a lot of issues with, when I said, with traffic. How far you're gonna have to walk, um, even if it's a, a, a parking lot or whatever. You know, is it gonna be gravel? Is it gonna be paved? Is it gonna have walkway accesses? Are you gonna have an elevator in this garage? And, what they're saying, is it, is it gonna be a pay garage? Are you gonna have security under all the time? Just my question, because I think like this has all come up, and there's not been a lot of, have listened, and we've seen no pictures of the drawings and all that kind of thing, so. You, you kind of, I think, just dropped around everybody, and everybody's, everybody's kind of shocked.
Well, and tonight, this is the initial public hearing, and this is the first time the county has brought it to the city council. So tonight, once we close the public hearing, then we'll have a first reading, and then at the next meeting... at the next meeting would be the secondary.
Are you trying to have a little more transparency, like publish it in the paper?
That, that would be up to the county, not the city.
Okay. Well, now, COVID's down, then we get that with the county meetings. Sounds like we shouldn't have been there all along. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
My name's Janice Kissler, I live at 180 West Columbus. I have worked in this community since 1986, and just three years ago, I moved to Martinsville. That was my dream all those many years. And now, someone, the county, wants to buy my property. I'm sorry to say, I do not want to sell. I now have my dream job because I can walk to work every day, and I love that very, very much, and I would hate to give that up. And if I have to give it up, I can guarantee I will be moving out of the county again.
Anyone else in the public?
Harry Oaks, speak on behalf of the county citizen. I've heard, uh, Brian Collier's a great author, and I've heard his speech several times before, that, that we were going twice, and I'd heard it was going to be 300-car parking area, and now I see 186. We talked about growth, and I wonder where those 30% grow at this time? I don't think anyone can understand what they're being asked to do, till we do what the county intends to do. You have two options on the table without a specific.
Any other comments from the public?
Senator Carter, 90 West Edgewood, Martinsville. You know, we talk about, they talk about the thoroughfares being named, all that, but for some of the citizens, Mulberry is a thoroughfare. And you close that off, and you're, especially with, you're talking about different things happening around the square, the new performance center, moving from the south side to the north side of Martinsville, and the car sometimes is really tough. It's really been tough the last two years, but, uh, thank God that's over. But, uh, I, I can see it coming back, especially if you, if you close that street off. And I, you know, as I look around, and I, you know, I vote in the county building, and there are many times, I never had trouble parking, okay? And even though you're going to grow it, it doesn't look like you're going to grow it as much as you've still got parking. And I, I, you know, we're disadvantaged because we can't see the drawing and what else proposed, but, uh, I think, I, I hope that we wait till the very last, if you're going to make any good streets, 300, maybe something like that. I understand the parking, but I think it's a, it's a piece of design changes that helps that long, and I do feel sorry for.
Good. Jim, do you want to? You got a shower on? Anyone else in the public? Anyone else want to make a public comment at this time? Anyone else?
Andrea, if I could, we're just showing right now. Your employees talk about your deliveries. So you have semis that go through that alley now to your deliveries house?
Yes, yes.
And so they come through the alley and exit out? To the countryside?
Yes. Yeah, they'll pull in off of the bank.
And so you're done for your loss of land, right?
So does the county, the semis as well.
Okay, delivers?
To Mulberry, yes.
Okay.
And their maintenance may uses the alley as much as we would, if not.
And your trash, I'm thinking that they probably back into the alley and dump it and go back.
Well, normally, really, they come very early in the morning, so I think they come from the Mulberry side, because our dumpster is facing the back of our garage.
Mr. Messmer, Commissioner Collier, if you want to, I got a couple of questions I have here, if you want to address. One, one of them was the county's deliveries, the timeline on the purchase of the homes, how property values may be affected, uh, what about nighttime security with the garage, and the traffic affecting the children? And, uh, is the garage going to have an elevator? Those are some of the ones I thought.
Okay, well, if you start going through, if we miss some, please bring us back. So the first thing I want to say is, we're not talking about this in a adversarial way. We're not trying to bully anyone to the point that was made. That was, that charge was brought by Teresa, I don't know why. Completely understand you feel that way, but one of the things we've tried to make clear is, this isn't about bullying. We're looking to get our plans for the future, and that includes bullying across those two lots. We're not trying to be mean about it. Uh, the question was asked, well, why would we take spots from their lot to my accident? Well, the reason, we would likely do that, and I talked about this with Deckard today, we have to talk with our design team, see if we can make modifications, but if not, there is not an or salad, or salad alley, and we're making an accommodation that we would work otherwise, and so that's why we would ask for it to come from their lot side, most likely. I'm not giving a hard task because we would need to talk to our team, but we're trying to show that we are open to working, but we're having to get some give and take both ways, most likely. In terms of the deliveries, uh, please hear me, I, I don't mean this to be done cheap, but New York City, Chicago, Indianapolis, everybody in crowded downtown still gets deliveries. We have to work through that on our own, we know that, or we're not going to do it. I don't think that's going to destroy business because lots can be determined with it. Is it a hardship? Yes, yeah, we can. But we think that there's probably practical solutions that they're going to be coming in terms of buying the house. This speech has that, we would have liked to have already made offers. One of our appraisers got put in the hospital from COVID, and so that slowed us down, but we did start getting our appraisals today, and so hopefully we'll be offered offers in short order.
We, we went out and had, we gave them two appraisals. We've got one set, and then the second person that was to give us the appraisals went to the hospitals, and we're waiting for some of those to come back. They should have been back by now.
Another thing that was talked about a number of times, or some of the scenarios, that there are endless hypotheticals that can be offered up, but those are hard to be taken lightly, we understand. I'm going through a condemnation issue with the Alamo, so it's not pleasant. We're not trying to go condemnation, we have no intentions of doing that, but, uh, things change, and we want to be respectful, we want to work with the community, that's one of the reasons we're bringing the option of vacating Mulberry Street to you, is we want to slow down and minimize the traffic in that area. That's what I'll, I'll say to that. And to Ms. Kissler's, um, comment, we're not coming to take anybody's property. We've made that clear from the start, we made that clear to all the homeowners. We told them that we don't want to build a garage, just like Brian said, we're prepared to go vertical, we have bonds set to close in May is the timeline we're on. If we have to go vertical, we'll go vertical, but it will save the taxpayer millions of dollars if we go horizontal, so that's acceptable, but we're not going to force anyone's hand. And so, to Gary's point, he said, if that, options before you and you don't know what, we're shooting for around 300 spots. If we go horizontal, we have some other great spaces that we will also build on, we may not hit exactly 300, but we're going to provide parking for the city, whether or not, our needs too, but the city overflow, whether it's vertical or horizontal, so I don't think that's an issue. I think some of what we've discussed is outside of the comments, so whether the alley should be vacant or not. We brought a project before you guys that we think is worthy of consideration. We know that that may not be what everybody wants to hear, but those are the things that we want right before you decide.
Does that address your questions and concern?
Uh, what kind of timeline are you looking at if you have to get with Eric to see about that design model, and how, if we can make something work there?
For Eric on that, how long that takes?
Well, obviously, Phil, I'm here tonight to listen, and, you know, I will get with our design team tomorrow, we'll start looking at, you know, we are, why maybe there is not a drawing to show, there's not one developed, because we are still reviewing, still meeting with all the office holders, the judges, et cetera, to determine what is this work in progress. And we have big pictures of what might want to be, but whenever it starts to get down to details, those are still being worked out. So as we start to lay the, the, the spaces out, we will absolutely take into effect, into account if we can maintain some type of an EBRAS for them as well.
One thing also we want to mention, this was brought up by somebody else, not just this evening, all of our meetings are live streamed. We invite the public to be there, we've noticed each time we've taken an action, and all, we keep all of our YouTube videos online, people can access it through our website, so we encourage you, commissioners, council, county commissions, EBA, they're all over
Any other questions from the council for Josh O'Brien?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public at this time?
I still don't feel like I got an answer. And is there, first of all, they're, they're talking several different segments of building. Where are they starting first? Are they starting buying the properties? Are they starting taking Dewey's possessions, parking lot? Where are they starting first? I mean, what's that timeline? Is there an A, B, C?
I don't mean to put words in the county's mouth, but I think it's a situation where they're coming, this is their first step, coming for a public hearing on vacating the alley and.
But they've talked several different segments, is, is, but what is going to be the very first thing that they do? That's my question.
The security part, is that correct?
Security and the parking garage and our building at the fairgrounds, they're one big project.
It's all one project? So what's this timeline? I mean, are they going to say, next week we're going to do this, next week we're going to do this?
So, yeah, so I, I'll address a little bit of the schedule, and also some of the schoolwork. Quite honestly, part of the decision of what the city is going to do about vacating the alleys or not, in Mulberry Street, that is all part of our decision process. If you say no, we're not going to vacate the alleys, we're not going to vacate Mulberry Street, that may change the entire direction. Okay? I think as far as what the county is looking at, getting back to the, the building on the fairgrounds property that we're looking at, looking at the, the security vestibule or the security part of the west side of the annex, as well as the parking, the timeframe for that, which has been discussed in the newspapers, been discussed in commissioner meetings, is the May-June timeframe. So those decisions will be, drawings will be completed on those smaller projects, or those projects, I should say, in that timeframe. Future building, hu, big building projects, renovations of buildings, that's in the future. That is only looking at a master plan at this point in time.
Betty, you have?
No, we answered it, I go.
At this time, I hear the public hearing closed, and the petition to vacate the public ways, and without objection, the council meeting will reconvene. At this time, on our agenda, we have some unfinished business. Council, we need, we need to name someone to the fire merit board. Fire chief came a couple meetings ago and asked for this, and they've not received any names, so. If you're not prepared to have some names, then I would suggest our next meeting, which is at the 14th, Mr. Porter?
Yes.
March 14th, have some conversation and have somebody for chief of green, they are going through a hiring process, and they need someone to represent the council on that merit board. Any questions?
No, I'd say next week we'll have some main board.
Our new business, Mr. Coffey, you want to move through the first reading of the ordinance?
Uh, what you have in your pack tonight is the, um, first reading of ordinance 202234 and 202235, which is the vacation of the public waves. 34 is Mulberry Street, 35 is the alleys that we've talked about in the public hearings here. Again, this is your first reading this evening. It'll be coming back for you on March 14th, 27th.
So we have another first reading, Mr. Oaks.
This is to amend the ordinance that we've already done, the Anna properties. We've been through those details, and you have included in your pack the specifics of where our street sizes are, where our lot sizes are, where our setbacks are. We found a mistake in there, and we're going to correct the street size, it should be 50 feet, and that's what, you know, matches what our, uh, street designs are here in Marcusville.
Are you, any questions for Mr. Oaks? Again, this is a first reading.
Yeah, this did go before the planning commission, uh, and the planning commission did recommend the council, uh, by the end, so that, that could be modified.
So again, we'll bring this back on the agenda for the March 14th. Mr. Merritt, I guess you're elected to have this, uh, annual financial report?
Thank you, Mayor. So before you tonight, is the annual financial report estimated to the place system. So tonight, this is before you have the acknowledgement, that doesn't necessarily mean that you agree or disagree on those items that were submitted to the annual financial report are based on our planning system.
Are there any comments for Mr. Merritt? If not, I'm going to entertain a motion regarding the financial report. I should say annual financial report.
I'd like a motion to approve the consideration of annual financial report.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
A motion made and second to approve the annual financial report is presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oaks, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We are be, probably getting some new police vehicles, so Mr. Dunn, if you'll come forward in the surplus of vehicles?
Yep. When they finally get manufactured, we do have some new police cars coming to releasing. We want to surplus seven cars, I believe you all have a list, and if you don't, I can give you another copy. Does everybody have a copy? Uh, these are seven cars that have served us well, and we would appreciate consideration of allowing us to. So what we're going to do with the proceeds is we will use the proceeds for equipment of the cars.
Any questions for Mr. Dunn?
Uh, so these are all vehicles, I think, of the police department, so that will go all back to them.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion approved.
Motion made to approve the surplus of vehicles presented to you. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's none, motion carries. Prior to tonight's meeting, you were sent copies of the claims for review. Are there any comments or questions regarding the claims? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion approved claim.
The motion made in second to approve the claims is presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those know, motion carries. Any comments from the council tonight?
I'd like to wish Coach Kipstags and the Martinsville Artisans good luck tomorrow night. They're going to beat Bloomington South in their first game of the season.
It's Martinsville sixty-eight, Bloomington South sixty-three.
I'd like to wish happy birthday to Neil Deckard Jr.?
Second.
The second, I'm sorry, the second. My apologies. And Ben Merritt? Merritt?
So you guys are going to?
We thought maybe you had this all very much, but that's a little.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
Any, I have, I have one item. It pertains to our Board of Works. And I would respectfully request that you appoint or consider appointing a study commission on the problem that was brought up. I feel sometimes Board of Works makes some decisions without advice or at least consulting with council members. Ultimately receive the blame and the pressure along with the mayor when we have problems within our community. And after all, that's why we're represented. I think sometime a terrible injustice was done to the merchants. I've expressed this several times. The one hundred block of Morgan Street, East Morgan, especially that eastern half of the block, on the north side, we took away some valuable parking spaces, not only to the A to Z auction companies, but the other businesses in that area. And yes, I've been there, I've met with the merchants, and I've seen it firsthand. And I think they are at a disadvantage. Present time, that auction house has reverted to almost all their sales online, which requires people coming continually, picking items up and delivering them. We've eliminated parking spaces on that side. And I think we really need to give that some careful attention, regardless of the decision to that general parking in that area.
You know, great minds think alike. Because tonight, the Board of Works, we asked the chief of police to study. We're looking at the fifteen-minute loading zone. And we're looking at the possibility of making Sycamore and Morgan a four-way stop. Putting back some of the spaces that we took away on Sycamore. And then the possibility of putting parking back on the south side of the street.
I appreciate that. I would hope we could have some representation by council. I think it'd be a terrible injustice to even consider moving a loading area around the corner on another street. Just my thoughts. And I would be more than happy to serve on the study commission.
Okay.
And I concur with Councilman Deckard on that. I, the coffee shop, I love. I think it's a great business. I hate that they don't have parking right in front of it. That little clothing shop, I'd love to see that continue to flourish. And I think without parking in front, it's a detriment to them. So.
Hopefully, Chief Richards will have some information back to us.
If I could add, I'm glad that Councilman Deckard and Eric Puffman, because I'll receive a complaint. I know how we changed our direction here on Jefferson. Going north there, Morgan, it's, it's been stalled for that construction. And I've had a couple of citizens that have contacted me that got stopped. They pulled in there going, realized it was, and whatever reason didn't think they'd take the alley. They turned around and came back out. I think one was a citation or coming out the wrong way. My understanding was a citation on the morning. I think there was two, by the way, the top. Is there something we can do? I know we, we've got the parking already angled that way. So I don't know if we can take it back and make that a two-way once again, as your parking situation. But is there anything we can do or signage or something to do for people to know, you know, they get in there, they pay and they exit the alley?
Well, we did put a stop sign back at Jefferson Street, so if they turn around and come back out, they can. There's a stop sign there. So right now, it's, they get caught in there, they can come back out. If, if one of the businesses, they can use the alleys and the alleys are open as long as one of the businesses hasn't got blocked.
Because I know, like you said, I think once I did, I was sure what to do and I even came out to make it so.
I know, I've done that. I've gone in there and forgot.
Well, I think sometimes some of the businesses will park in the alley and leave their vehicles there, and that does. Mr. Wisco, I don't, I wasn't even minding yourself. Any other comments from the council? Any other comments from the public?
To follow up on this discussion. To follow up on this discussion about possibly moving the parking for the A to Z around the corner to Sycamore. Okay, consider applying to the shop owners who are east of A to Z auction on the north side of the street. Their customers are going to park on the side and, oh my goodness, they're going to meet somebody carrying a great big table. It's dangerous. I wish you guys would think things, or that would be nice.
Anyone else? Without objection, we adjourn. Our next meeting will be on Monday, March fourteenth.